Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order at 6:00 PM. Thank you all for attending. The first order of business today is to elect a chairman for this meeting. We will hold a vote to select a chairman who will preside over the meeting. At this time, I would like to open the floor for nominations. Are there any nominations for the position of chairman?
I would like to nominate Ryan Thompson for chairman.
Any more nominations? Okay, so we're going to close and are we going to now make a motion? And we'll now make a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
In a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Okay. So that passes unanimously. Ryan Thompson, you are now the chairman and you will take over the meeting and elect a vice chairman.
Grab my stuff real quick. Okay, thank y'all for being patient with me there. The, the third item on the agenda is the election of a vice chairman. This will be the election of vice chairman for the year 2025. Open the floor for nominations.
I'll nominate Jake Patrick.
Any additional nominations? Okay, hearing no additional, entertain a motion to appoint Jake Patrick, vice chair.
Oh, I'm making a motion to elect Jake Patrick as the co-chairman.
All right, now ask for a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Jake is the vice chair. Okay, now we're to items four and five. We will ask everybody that's in attendance, if you, if you're able to please stand with us. First, we'll do the invocation and then we'll immediately go into the pledge of allegiance. I'll ask Mr. Kessler to lead us in the, the invocation.
Let's pray. Lord, thank you so much for the stay you've given us. Lord, thank you for your blessings. Thank you for your love and protection and thank you for this country, Lord, and what it means. Be with us tonight as we go through your business. Just help us to be respectful and courteous and, and handle the meeting with honor, Lord. And thank you for our military, Lord, bringing them back safe and just bless and protect them. In Jesus' name, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you very much. You may be seated. Okay. Our next agenda item is item six, the approval of the agenda. Mr. Kessler did announce to y'all that there is one item that has been postponed. That's item three, Manning Graham requests to rezone 33.5 acres from AR1 to L1 to allow for industrial uses. Are there any other changes to the agenda?
No, sir.
Technically, I guess that's not a change, it's on the agenda. Any other changes from the board? All right, hearing none. I'll again ask for a, a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the agenda. Can I have a second?
I'll make a second.
Thank you. Ms. Smith, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, our next item is item seven. This is public comments. Comments shall pertain to agenda items only. So you will have an opportunity to speak with the agenda items, the public hearing items that come across with new business. Should you wish to make remarks, please clearly state your name into the microphone before commencing to speak. There's also a spot to sign up and put your name down there as well. Please do that. I will say, and I want to try to say this before each of the agenda items. We are, in order to run a, a smooth meeting, we're going to utilize 15 minutes for the applicant or the, the presenting. And then we'll have a 15-minute period for any opposition or any of the additional in the crowd that would like to speak in opposition. I would like to, for everybody to keep that in mind. Be, be conscious of any of the others in the room that may want to speak as well. To try not to utilize the entire 15 minutes with the, with the first speaker. The, the clock there on the wall will be helping us keep track as well on our end. But that'll go for each agenda item. And then there'll be a five-minute additional, if there's additional for, follow-up from the applicant on any particular item. With that, we will move into new business. So all items presented during this portion of the meeting will be presented at the future Board of Commissioners meeting as a public hearing as well. So this is the first public hearing. There'll be a second public hearing and the Board of Commissioners will make the final vote. We are recommending body to the Board of Commissioners. Okay, public hearing item number one is Charlita Alblock, butchered his name. Alblockwa, Alblockwa requests to rezone 6.2 acres from AR1 to AR2 to allow for permitted uses in AR2 located at 550 Brogdon Road. This is in the 3rd District, map 31-9, parcel 23. Staff?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So the applicant is requesting to rezone that 6.20 acres to AR2. Per the Effingham County Code of Ordinances, conforming AR1 zoning shall have five acres or more. Since the applicant would like to subdivide the parcel into smaller lots, the zoning will need to be changed to AR2. Your staff report that you do have has the current uses allowed within the AR2 zoning. The applicant wants to keep the current home that's on the property as a 3.205 acre tract and create three one-acre tracks along Williams Road. Our staff has reviewed the application and it is complete.
Thank you, Chelsea. Any questions for staff before we move into the public hearing portion? All right, hearing none. We will act, we will open the public hearing called the public he, hearing to order for the first agenda item. Is the applicant here to speak on behalf of the rezoning request? Thank you, ma'am. If you'll please come forward and state your name and I'm sure you'll do a much better job with it than I just did. I apologize for that.
It's okay. I'm Charlita Alblockwa.
So can you tell us a little bit about what you're proposing to do? Anything additional than what staff told us?
Oh, we live on the current five acres and so we were looking to divide the back three that we're not using for our current homestead that we have for potential giving it to family members and allowing them to have parcels of land in the future for any other opportunities that they seek.
Any, any questions from the board for, for the applicant at this point? Yes, sir. All right, hearing none. I will open it up to if there's anybody additional in the crowd in favor, if you would like to come up. You don't have to. Okay, seeing none. We may call you back up, but I think you're good right now.
Uh, thank you.
Anybody in the, in opposition? Okay, now seeing there is none, I will close the public hearing. Any discussion related to this agenda item? Any questions of staff now that you've heard her? All right, hearing none, I'll ask for a motion on this item.
I make a motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion. A motion to approve. We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye as well. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. It will go to the county commissioners. Just keep that in mind. Make sure you reach out to staff to know the date. Do we have the date?
April 1st.
It'll be April 1st. So make sure, April 1st, you're at the county commissioner because they'll, they'll be the final decision on it, okay? All right, thank you. All right, moving on, public hearing number two. Is there anything? All right, public hearing number two. Peterson Duperville requests to rezone five acres from AR1 to AR2 to allow for permitted uses in AR2. This is located at 116 Oak Street. This is the 2nd District. It's map 450D, parcel 11.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The applicant is requesting to rezone that five acres to AR2. Again, per the Effingham County Code of Ordinances, conforming AR1 zoning shall have five acres or more. And since the applicant would like to subdivide the parcel into smaller lots, it will need to be rezoned AR2. The applicant would like to subdivide this into three lots. And again, you do have that AR2 zoning uses allowed on your staff report. Staff has reviewed the application and the application is complete.
And I, I see from the maps we have on page 13, so there is some adjacent AR2 across the street. Am I reading that map correctly?
Uh, yes, sir. So I did put the zoning map on the screen for you so you can see that there are two across the street and then further on each side as well.
Yeah, that is a bit more zoomed out, I think, than what we've got. Any question, any questions from the board for staff before we go into public hearing? All right, hearing none. We will open the public hearing. Is the applicant here and would like to present the request? Please come forward, state your name, just tell us a bit about your request.
Hi, my name is Peterson Duperville and I'm currently on 116 Oak Street. And I would like to divide the land, I mean to do the rezoning because I would like to build one house for my in-laws on one side of the house.
So your, your current plan is for one subdivision to create two lots?
Yes.
Okay, anything else?
That's all.
I appreciate it.
All right.
Thank you. We may have another question, but for right now, you're good. Is anybody else in the audience here for the pro? Okay, hearing none there. Do we have anybody in the audience that would like to speak against this request? All right, that was very straightforward. We'll close that public hearing as well. At that time, is there any discussion from the board? Any questions, things that you have a concern with on this?
Said it was for his in-laws.
I believe that's, that's what he said. There will be nothing to restrict it from being sold or given to whoever else might come along in the future that would want to buy or purchase it. Anything else? All right, well then we will, I'll ask for a, a motion.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you. We have a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye as well. Petition passes. As a positive recommendation to the county commission, again, the same thing. Make sure you're at the county commission meeting.
I'm sorry, it's actually March 4th.
March 4th?
Yes, I'm sorry.
I should have called that, yes.
Yes.
It's next month, yeah. So, so we'll make sure we clarify with the previous applicant because I would hate for her to show up. Oh, she's still on the ground, yes. March 4th, please make sure you're there as well. So, okay, thank you very much. You're welcome to stay if your item's gone through or you can step out anytime you'd like to. All right, item number three, public hearing number three has actually been postponed. I don't really need to read this all the way through, right? If it's been postponed? Okay, moving on, public hearing number four. This is Neil McKenzie as agent for Nick Finland requests to rezone plus or minus 221.87 acres from AR1 to R5 to allow for residential development. This is located on Goshen Road. It's the 2nd District. It's map 451, parcel 41. Ms. Chelsea?
Yes, sir. So again, I just want to clarify, this application was received on June 19th of 2024. So that was before the commencement of the moratorium on August 20th of 2024. And the applicant is requesting to rezone 221.87 acres to the R5 zoning to allow for residential development along the, along Goshen Road. If approved, this proposed development must come before the Board of Commissioners for that preliminary plat approval. Per the county engineer, the Goshen widening project is estimated to be complete April of 2028 with this development falling in that second phase of that project. Staff has reviewed the application and it is complete.
All right, thank you very much. All right, any questions for staff from the board at this time?
Uh, Mr. Chair, would you remind them about the clock?
Yes, I figured this one we might need to do so. So yes, this, as, as I mentioned previously, we are utilizing the 15 minutes. The applicant will have 15 minutes. Then we will ask if there's any additional support, but if there is additional support, that'll be limited in that 15 minutes. Also, please, as the applicant, keep that in mind. And then we'll, we will ask for any opposition. That entirety will have 15 minutes. So again, we're not going to track each person, but on average, three minutes you can cover a lot. So if we do three minutes, that'll be five people with an opportunity. We do reserve the right of, of the board. We can extend that if we feel that there's additional time needed. I would ask if you're in, in opposition, make sure that what you're, what you're saying is not overly repetitive. Try to make sure we bring additional new facts to the table. So hearing that, thank you Steve for that reminder. We will have the clock there, but we will open the public hearing. There's the applicant here. I see Mr. McKenzie's there, ready to roll, so we can, we can roll.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Appreciate it. Thank you, Chelsea. I'm Neil McKenzie here tonight for Coleman Company. I'm the project engineer. With me I have Mr. Charles Way, he's the owner's rep. And as Ms. Chelsea said, we're seeking to rezone 221 acres from AR1 to R5. The property is located at 939 Goshen Road and is between 21 and what will be Effingham Parkway. The site is, is on the east side is bounded and west is bounded by two railroad tracks. And then there's about a thousand-foot strip of wetland between the properties that front the main road and the, you know, and the, and the, the project or what will be the project. The project is intended to be built in accordance with the R5 standards. In your packet, you should have a concept site plan that kind of outlines what we would plan to do. The current plan has lots shown at 55 by 120, adhering to the, the R5 setbacks. The total lot count shown on this plan is 377 homes, which would equate to a gross density of 1.7 per acre, a net of 3.3 approximately. In the R5 classification, there is a maximum of five, so we do fall underneath that. As far as the, you know, in terms of, of buffering and, and what the site has to offer, we do have buffers on the plan that exceed the code minimum. Against AR1, the, the code minimum is 15 feet. We're offering 50 feet as part of the site plan. The existing vegetation on the site is really not, there's not much there. I mean, most of the upland that's on the site has been cleared, is pasture. I think it's a horse farm now, so, so most of the site's cleared. So any buffering that we would propose would have to be, you know, supplemented to some degree to get the, you know, to get the buffering effect. For, you know, as with these R5 projects, we would propose an amenity package depending on what the product ends up being, that package is to be determined. But you would expect your standard pool and that kind of thing for a, you know, a project of this size. Along with open space. So this plan does have a lot of open space. We've got 35% of the area is, has been earmarked for open space. But that does include the wetland calculated, you know, in there as the county allows it. 50% of the wetland area is, is allowed to be counted, counted for open space. As far as stormwater management goes, you know, you'll notice on the plan, there is a large band of wetlands. This, these do serve as the headwaters to Black Creek that ultimately drains to the east, back to Savannah Basin. We would install stormwater, you know, management ponds on site and adhere to the county's stormwater management requirements for quality and quantity before discharging to these wetlands. There are, there is a flood zone on the property. It's flood zone A. Most of the wetland, or I'm sorry, most of the flood zone, if not all of it, is contained within the wetland. It follows the 28 contour approximately and the upland on the site is around 50. So, so, so there's a lot of fall on the site and we, we will not impact any of the flood zones. So for the access points, we do, this is a flag-shaped lot, so you do have a, have a narrow piece. The frontage along Goshen Road is about 100 feet. That's where our main access would come in. And currently, we do have a property under contract for the emergency access. 665 is the address and it's the easternmost parcel that butts up to the railroad, you know, on the east side. That's where our, you know, our other access point would be. Utilities, this would be served by Effingham County Utilities. There are, there are mains in the Goshen right-of-way, so that's what we would tie into. This site would require a lift station to pump out to the main road. Just a, a note on the project schedule. So, so if the board approved this or they recommended approval tonight and we went to the BOC and were approved in March, we would still have about 12 months of engineering and permitting before we would first, you know, we would do any site work, you know, on the project. So that gets us to March of next year. And then as fast as it could possibly happen, you would probably have another six to eight to 10 months of site prep before the first homes would be started. So that takes us to the end of '26 with first homes coming online, you know, probably mid-'27. So that would be about as fast as we would bring homes online on a project like this. As far as how this fits in with the, you know, the county's plans, it is in accordance with the future land use map. And the capacity for utilities does become available in 2027. So it, it aligns with where our first homes would begin to come online. And then as far as traffic improvements, again, the project would be coming online about the same time that these improvements that the county has planned are being completed. The two roundabouts and Effingham Parkway, both would be completed prior to this project really getting started out there. So with that, based on being in, in, in compliance with the land use map, the capacity of the utilities and the traffic improvements that are going to be put in place for the purposes of, you know, the expansion of the corridor, we believe this would be a good fit for the county in this, you know, in this area. And just ask that we get approval tonight and glad to answer any questions.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Can, Chelsea, can you point on the other map where that parcel is that he talked about? I don't think everybody knows where that parcel was.
On this map?
Where the X second entrance is going to be?
Let me...
The easternmost parcel?
Yes.
Up top, right there?
Right there.
And that goes all the way to Goshen?
Yes, sir, right here.
Ma'am, ma'am, you'll, you'll have a chance.
So...
I understand, you're gonna have a chance.
Is it an easement or is it?
Right now, it would just be an easement.
And there's no need to zone that piece now to allow for that to happen. Is that correct? Like, right now, we're not considering zoning on that piece.
Let's discuss that later.
Any other, thanks for the clarification. I know, I think that was part of what we've seen from some of the delays in getting this to this board in the past. Any other questions? I do have a couple actually of staff and then of clarification, but open up to the rest of the board if you've got anything before I ask those. Any clarifications or questions you've got?
Yes, I have a question. So you're saying that homes would be available mid-2027, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. That would be as quick as they could be.
Okay. Jonathan, I have a question. So the improvements to the infrastructure in that area, when will those be completed?
Yeah, so like Chelsea said, for the Goshen Road, improvements, we're doing a widening of that road. There'll be a middle left or right turn lane in the, in the center. So we're expecting the Phase 2, which is where this property is located, to be done April 2028. However, Effingham Parkway, there'll be a roundabout there on Goshen and that's scheduled still to be complete September of 2025. And then at the Hodgville intersection of Goshen, there's also another roundabout and that should be complete November of '26.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Um, so at the back of the property, um, what kind of buffers do you guys, just for clarification, intend on putting in? I see it backs up to some residences on the backside, looks like they have some, some pasture use and whatnot as well. And, and it's gonna be quite a bit of density, I believe, um, right up to their back door.
Right, so, yes, sir. So, so right now, um, there's cur- you know, it's currently cleared. So we would propose to provide a landscape buffer, um, um, as of now. Right now, it's showing it fifty foot, so we would plant a fifty-foot strip with, 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 you know, enough trees and sh- sh- shrubs, that kind of thing to screen everything, you know, as much as possible.
Gotcha. Would you guys be, uh, opposed to, uh, like a dirt berm, to some extent?
I, I don't think so. I, I mean, I think it would be something we could do.
And the standard, the, I think there's a reference to the buffer standard, and y'all are proposing to be in addition to the standard buffer requirement.
That's right, right.
Fifty foot's proposed to AR one, and then you have some buffers proposed to the, uh, the railroads as well, correct?
That's correct, yes, sir.
Can we get some clarity on that? Cause I do think that's important, um, because without some spes- uh, specificity to that, the standard buffers would apply. So I just want to make sure, so is it fifty feet that you're proposing?
Fifty feet.
To all of the perimeter of the railroad as well as to the adjacent?
The railroad right now is showing it forty-five feet. Uh, the perimeter to the, to the adjacent residence is fifty. So, but I think we could take fifty all the way around with no problem.
Uh, Mr. Chair, the subdivision ordinance does have a buffer requirement, um, for railroads, and I believe it's fifty feet from the right-of-way. So you may want to check what the right-of-way is, and then that fifty feet applies, um, for the rail line. And I'm not sure what the right-of-way, they, it does the dance all the way up and down, so you just might want to check and see.
But you're saying the subdivision ordinance has a additional buffer beyond what the zoning ordinance is required?
Yes, sir.
And then, so I think the clarification of, uh, knowing what Goshen's gonna look like, answered the other question I had. I was asking about, is there enough right-of-way for you to do the improvements that you would need to do for D cell or left turns? If you had to do that with only a hundred-foot of frontage, but it sounds like the project will address those.
Yes, so, um, as part of the widening, they are putting in the third lane in the middle. So that kind of takes care of the left turn lane in. Um, so anything that, that would be right turn lane, we would have to install that with the project.
Yeah. But I'm assuming y'all followed other R fives, that there's, there's some things out there that, you know, are being looked at by the county, and there's likely going to be some request for consideration of whatever those changes are, maybe are, that this project might need to comply with those. Um, we don't know what those are, but I just wanted to bring that up at this point.
We know that's out there.
Are you oppo- are y'all opposed to maybe drawing out or having a longer timeline on the project because of that two thousand twenty-eight timeframe that they're saying for the infrastructure?
Yes, ma'am. We, we...
You are opposed, or you're...
No, we're, 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 we can meet that, right? So, um, we would be, we would be open to setting a certain amount of homes per year until everything is completed. I mean, we could definitely cap it, you know, on some level until the improvements are, are done. I don't think that's an issue at all.
Any other questions? All right, anybody else, uh, wanting to speak in favor? Please state your name. Yeah, and we are down to a minute twenty, just keep it, keep that in mind.
Neil covered it, I'll be brief. I just, I'm Charles Way, I'm representing the owner. To follow up on the buffers thing, I have spoken with, uh, one of the neighboring property owners to the south about that. They've expressed some desire for a combination of landscaping, berms, fencing. I think berms and plantings are definitely in order, um, on the south end of the property there. I think, I'm not sure about a fence, that seems redundant. Um, and the berm, you know, that's something that we'll take into consideration during design. I mean, a lot of that depends on how much dirt you've got on the site, how much room you have to account for rear drainage. There's design considerations there, but absolutely, we agree that that southern property line where there's no vegetation, it needs to be, you know, some combination of berm and planted buffer. As far as the delays on, um, starting houses or anything, you know, if we get the first house online, um, mid-two thousand twenty-seven, you know, the absorption around here is not gonna be more than forty, fifty houses a year. So you're really not gonna have a substantial number of people living there until probably mid-two thousand twenty-eight. But yes, if there isn't a reasonable way to, to set a, you know, a, a fixed cap of, of number of residents, we'd entertain that.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, we will now ask for, uh, any of those in the audience that are, are in opposition. We will do the same, we will start a fifteen-minute time period. Again, as I mentioned, please do be considerate of others, and try to, uh, be succinct with your comments, please.
I'm Jimmy Blakey. I live about a quarter of a mile from this place. How many homes are they gonna put in that place?
Three hundred and seventy-seven.
Three hundred and seventy-seven? What kind of homes are they gonna be? They gonna be rentals, or what?
They're gonna be single-family detached, is the way the, the...
Beg your pardon?
Single-family detached houses, houses on individual lots, is the way the plan shows to us.
They're not gonna be rental houses?
Nothing presented to us, it's just said it was gonna be rental houses.
Okay. And you're talking about, you're saying, you're gonna still have Goshen Road, still gonna be two lanes?
So we're in the process of widening the roads, there'll be, uh, two lanes, but then there'll be a middle lane as well, which will help...
You still have two lanes?
Improve. There'll be a middle lane, so you can turn left or right, depending on what you're...
Yeah, but you're still gonna have two lanes. Alright, you're gonna, there's gonna be three subdivisions. Two of them are crack-a-box subdivisions. Gonna be slums in ten years, they all rentals, from what I understand. The, the road ain't gonna handle that traffic. They need a four-lane, the dead gum road. I, I'm speaking against this. I, I bought some land there ten years ago, tickled to death with it. Now you're crowding me out. First thing you know, they, they gonna be complaining about my sheep stinking. I'm gonna have to get rid of my sheep. Ain't gonna be able to have the farm lifestyle that I got now. I mean, it seems like these people are come, coming up these contractors and buying up all this land and, and just scarring the dead gum county up with houses and, uh, subdivisions and dead gum warehouse. Ruining the county. Thank you. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, sir. All right, we have...
Everybody's gonna have their chance to talk, please be respectful.
Thank you.
Was I not respectful?
Oh, yes, sir, you are, you are. We were just trying to make sure everybody could hear, so there wasn't other conversation. No, sir, you're good. Yes, ma'am. Please, uh, if you don't mind, give us your name.
Uh, my name is Carol Brown. Want me to write it here, right?
Yes, ma'am, if you don't mind, please.
Alrighty. Okay. I hope you guys don't mind, I'm not a ad libber, okay? I'll keep this short, but not elaborating on the obvious concerns about infrastructure, traffic flow, school resources, and environmental impact of a large, high-density subdivision like this, especially as there are about three thousand new high-density residences approved to be started in the next couple of years, plus the thousand or so that are actively being built right now. This is what I'd like to mention, the high impact on the neighbors south of the property. Call attention to the location of the property, correct a couple of wrong statements on the developer's application, bring attention to the flood zone between the development and Goshen Road, and I'll ask a question at the end. I'm here with my neighbors, uh, Jack Norris, Ava Dantis, and her son, Avant Dantis. And I speak for all of them, we've all spoken ahead of time. Our property is border High Ho Hills to the south on map parcels number four fifty-one fifty-seven, four fifty-two dash six, and four fifty-two five. We will be directly impacted by this new subdivision because we do not have the wide natural buffer that the other properties adjoining High Ho Hills have. The impact on us will be significant, and we can't measure it in dollars and cents. Because of the address, whoop, I'd like to, uh, share some stuff with y'all, is that okay?
Give it to the board?
Give it to staff, please.
All right, uh, because of the address, some, some male up High Ho Hills in with properties on Goshen Road, particularly the properties on the north side of Goshen Road. Note the area I circled in red in my little map that you're gonna get here. The map should be very recognizable. That's kind of what I think everybody's seeing this property being part of. But we see that how High Ho, for us, that's not the community for High Ho Hills. The community for High Ho Hills is the part that I've circled in green. In that part, you'll see there are multiple horse farms and neighbors that live on country properties of more than five acres. The applicant indicated that there is no reasonable economic use for this property as it is currently zoned. We disagree. There are many other uses for this property, like the horse farm it was just a few years ago. And note that it is a short, currently a shortage of places to board horses, so it could probably be successful, as it was before. Uh, the applicant describes the properties in the vicinity as being vacant and subdivisions. We disagree with that as well. The properties in the vicinity are zoned AR one, and many of them are larger than five acres, some considerably larger as Ava's property, which is, uh, almost fifty acres. Some of the area, and most of these properties are currently occupied by the owners. They're not vacant. I mean, unless you look at that little piece of property over there, why the warehouses are, where they're gonna put more houses, it, it's, just is not, it's not vacant property. Some of the area circled in green is considered to be a subdivision called Coldbrook, and it is, but it is a low-density, large-lot subdivision with lots as, as large as thirty-five acres. Now I want to call attention to the flood zone, that is between High Ho Hills and Goshen Road, I think they mentioned that. Both the primary and secondary access must cross the flood zone. I shared a picture of the washout that occurred after an afternoon thunderstorm in two thousand nineteen. I know that the primary access will be a much better road than that driveway was. But that was an afternoon thunderstorm. If we have a catastrophic weather event, and they only have two ways out, that's three hundred and seventy-seven households that'll be trapped in there. In closing, the subdivision on High Ho Hills would only provide economic benefits for the current owners and the developers. Other uses of High Ho Hills farm could benefit the entire community for years to come in ways that aren't measured in dollars. And, thank you, and my question is, has an environmental impact study been done, and if so, where can we find it? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Do you have any questions?
I don't think so, no, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, uh, anybody else in opposition, please come forward and state your name, and write your name down, please.
Hey, I'm Gillian Banks. I live with my mom on the property that, um, is on the north side. We're the two that are two subdivided right there, and they're the, we're the widest side. When we're talking about putting berms in there, I live on the back...
Can you point to that, Chelsea?
Where, where's that at?
Right here. I'm in the middle, square in the middle, right there, I can show you.
Yeah, if you don't mind, step back just to confirm where Chelsea's, she's gonna put the arrow on it, just so we all know that Chelsea...
Yes, ma'am, if you want, come over here, you can probably show me that way, I can show them.
Okay, so I'm...
I, I will ask you to co-
Two subdivided, and my trailer's in that top little corner of the top subdivision. Keep going down, go down, go down, right there, keep going. You're in the same one, keep going straight down. Back, it's right there, right there. Go up to the top of that little corner, right there. You're right, that's good, right there.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Twenty years ago, when I put my trailer back there, the county gave me absolute crap because it is considered wetlands. Everything from right there where my trailer is, all the way across where she was pointing, all the way across, from the railroad track to where it comes in High Ho, and even across their, their stuff, is wetlands, all the way back to their property. If you put a fifty-foot berm on the backside of my, or the, whatever you wanna call it, side of my property, you're gonna flood me. I was back there the other day on the four-wheeler, I can sink my four-wheeler up to his handlebars, no lie. Um, back in June, or July, sorry, August, whenever it rained, we got fourteen inches of rain. It flooded us. We were to the second step of going in my house, okay? I, I'm just asking, like, y'all are talking about chapter thirty-four, the flood stuff. I want to know that, like, what it is and exactly how it is, because that is kind of new. I haven't heard our property button up to that in years, in forty years, that it's considered a flood zone. We've always been told it was wetlands. Now, I'm gonna keep going. Six sixty-five Goshen Road has not been sold. They are still in the process of trying to do it. They have to go through EPA, they have to go go through some soil testing, they have to go through all this stuff to make sure that they're able to go through that wetlands to build a road. Same thing with the entrance. If you go to the entrance, there's parts of that entrance for years. When it rains, would fall over on both sides, and I'm sure it could be built up way better. But I used to work back there as a teenager with Ms. Robin, and I'm telling you, I would go through knee-deep mud to get from my house to her house, to work at the horse farm. Now, when you're also talking about that, you're looking at, um, they said the thousand-foot strip, like where it is. Well, when you put a berm there, or you're gonna do something that's already considered wetlands, that's gonna be on my side, the north side, you're gonna flood every single one of us. Um, you're also looking at putting three hundred and seventy-seven houses back there. Not only three hundred and seventy-seven houses, two hundred and fifty apartments at the other end of Goshen. You're putting two hundred houses or more back behind Grace. You're putting three hundred, um, houses, um, at that, at that new little crackerjack place that's going up, that's a rental house, right there on the other side of the railroad track. Now, when you're talking about widening Goshen Road, there's a railroad track here, and there's a railroad track up here. So when you do it, it's gonna be built just like my call, unless you guys are planning on widening the railroad tracks. So that means we're gonna be here, and you have to come back to Tulane and go over the railroad tracks, and then it's gonna widen. Where they're talking about putting that second entrance is right at the entrance of Goshen Road and the railroad track. You're not gonna be able to make those turns they're talking about. As a person who has worked in the county for years and had to make several trips to South High School, when I leave my driveway, it is eight miles to South High. On any given day, when traffic's jacked up trying to get out of the county, it is a forty-five minute ride. My son, his senior year, two years ago, thirty-seven tardies, thirty-seven tardies, for being over an hour and ten minutes late to school. Was it my fault? No. It was the road's fault. Because you can't get down Goshen, you can't get down Hodgville, you can't get down Colicamie, and you can't get down thirty to get to a school. Now, the other thing is, you got Blanford Elementary School over here, that is taking all this. Well, that school will eventually be shut down, and you're building the new school. Okay, so all these people are gonna have to go to the new school, cause they won't go to south. So that's a track to get them across the county. Now, that's a thousand sixty-seven houses you're planning on putting on Goshen Road. A thousand sixty-seven, including apartments, and fifty percent of them are rental. And whenever you go through the soil samples and stuff, and if you want to come back, I, I have invited all the county commissioners, and I'll invite you guys, come on over. We'll have a party, I'm gonna let you listen to how loud the train tracks are, how loud the warehouses are. To, to add three hundred and seventy-seven houses behind us, where we have worked our behinds off, and my dad worked until he died of making property to where all his kids can live and grandkids could live in peace, and we could do farm and do whatever we want to out there, we're not able to do that anymore. Because y'all are taking all of the land and condensing it. And it's not fair. Goshen was, it has been and always has been farming all the way down through, for as long as I can remember. And utilities, you're talking about that stuff, that's a lot of utilities. I mean, lord, it took forever for the electric company to run my utilities nine hundred feet off the road. So you're talking about running that, you're running the water, you're running the sewer back there, is it gonna go at the main entrance? Is it gonna go down here at the place they don't even have purchased yet? Like, what's gonna go there? Um, Goshen Road improvements, you're talking about that. We're talking two thousand twenty-eight. We're talking five more years of us having to sit to make a left-hand turn out our own personal driveways for twenty to thirty minutes to get out on a, on a morning when traffic's backed up. The eighteen-wheelers that roll up and down Goshen Road are unreal. There are no plants on Goshen Road, there are no nothing of business that owns eighteen-wheelers unless the person actually lives there. So they roll all day long. Yesterday, forty-seven trucks rolled between the time at eight o'clock till whenever. So I'm just saying, you're gonna add three hundred and seventy-seven times two, cause it'll be two people living in the houses, more cars to Goshen Road. So a thousand sixty-seven houses times two, that's how much more traffic's going on Goshen. So 1,067 houses times two, that's how much more traffic's going on Goshen. And I'd appreciate all the stuff about the berm being explained, because I don't want my property flooded after I've worked so hard to get it the way it looks.
I think you've got a legitimate, I'm sure we'll hear back from the applicant on that. Okay, we're down, we got 30 seconds or so. Obviously, open it up, I see the number of folks in the crowd. I'm going to, because I think y'all are gonna need a few minutes to respond, we're gonna add five more minutes to this, we're gonna go for 20 minutes total, if that's okay with the rest of the board, and we'll offer to have anybody else, if there is anybody else in the audience that would like to speak.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Brandow. My husband and I moved to the county from Savannah about three and a half years ago. My family is originally from Effingham County, I'm a Salzburger, not that it matters, but we moved here to escape Savannah. I didn't like living in Savannah. Too many people, too much crime. I lived probably 300 feet from Abercorn Street with a church and another business in between, and I could still hear Abercorn. When we looked at our house on Goshen Road, my husband sat there at 5:00 traffic, didn't see a lot of traffic. The traffic has tripled since then. I work from home, and I'm one of the people who actually work from home, nine hours a day. I'm at my computer working, and already I can hear traffic all the time. I don't want to sit out in my backyard and hear traffic. You're putting, so roughly 700 more cars every day. Nothing but traffic. I wanted to have a little hobby farm, now I just want to leave.
Did you sign that? Did you, please? Will you, will you please? Yeah, yeah, I figured, I figured you would, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience that would like to speak in opposition? Yes, ma'am?
She's got to sign.
I gotta sign.
She has to sign.
We have to sign.
Yeah, that's my bad.
Thank you.
I do. Hey, thanks.
I am Ava Dantis, and I own the 48 acres to the south of the property, and I have a few questions. Well, this is a statement. You talk about roadwork and give dates of '27, '28, and realistically, that never happens. I mean, you know, I don't have the statistics, but everybody knows that when they say, okay, we're gonna do this in two years, it takes at least five years. So the whole question about the traffic has to do with the fact that that road improvement won't be happening. The last time, point number two, the last time I looked at the Effingham County ordinances about buffers, the 50-foot buffer was not wide enough for a berm, and it gave specs of how tall the berm was compared to how wide the easement was for it, and I think it was like 150 feet for an eight-foot berm.
There are buffer standards for certain types of berm, yes. I think they're offering something that's different than the standard from a standpoint that they aren't required to do the berm. You can certainly build a berm in what they're talking about, it doesn't meet that standard.
Well, what they said was 50 feet. I just want everybody to know that with a 50-foot buffer, there will be no berm, according to the Effingham ordinances.
They have the right to build a berm in a 50, they might not meet the height of another section, but we can elaborate on that, but there is...
Okay, that's just what I read in the ordinances. I agree with everybody else, the flood zone is not, is not on this map, but I agree with Jill that it's a real flood zone. And another question that's been raised is the ratio of the wetlands and flood zone to dry land, and the ratio is really off. And so that's a concern of paving as much dry land as they're gonna pave, the water that would be draining through, it's very sandy and it drains very well, but that's gonna be shut off, but if there's houses and roads in there, so then what's that gonna do to Jill's property? What's that gonna do to our property? Where's that water gonna go? And nobody has shown me any studies to prove, I'm not interested in opinions, to prove that it won't cause our property to be flooded like Jill's, and like the lady that lives at the corner of Forest Haven and Squirrel Run, whose property has been flooded by the Effingham Parkway. Once again, talk to DOT, nobody's guaranteeing anybody anything, it's just all speculation. I think that's it. Oh, no, one more. Nobody has talked about, is there a benefit to this, because it's personal to me, but obviously a benefit to all the subdivisions? It's not benefiting anybody except the property owners that are making money, the builders who are making money, and whoever else happens to be making money. But as far as the general population, the majority of the citizens of Effingham County are not benefiting from this continual growth. There is absolutely no benefit. So I would question, do we need another one? And of course, this is personal, 'cause it's right in my back door. I have livestock, I have horses, I have cows. You said no fence. Well, what's the guarantee that these children aren't gonna come onto my property with 20 horses and two cows? I mean, that's just not realistic, and I'm not hearing any solutions, none. There's not a solution. It's not on me to fence my property off to keep them off my property. I've been there 30 years, 20 years, something like that. So they're not offering me any guarantees that that's not gonna impact my life, just like that lady spoke of. You know, nobody moved to Effingham County to be in the city. Moved to Effingham County, we buy land, we have horses and cows, that's what you're supposed to do. But there's no guarantee that that can continue without some sort of protection.
Well, I'll say that thank you for your points, for sure. I think we'll all consider those. And this is not, this project in particular, but there are a lot of people that move to the county for other reasons than horses and cows. Myself included, I've moved here because I do live in a subdivision. I want the benefit of this county.
When did you move here?
20 years ago.
And into a subdivision?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, well, good for you.
So I just would say that from a statement of fact, there are others that do benefit from something like this happening. It helps, there's a housing need, so there's things that we have to consider. We definitely respect and want to consider all the adjacent property owners, we understand that it is concerning, if nothing else, to anyone.
The difference of opinion between, yes, people need to live somewhere, but let them live somewhere else.
So, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, if the audience would take a look at the screen, so what you see there is the geographic information system map, and you have the blue that runs through there.
Yes, ma'am. I had it blown up and then it shrank right back down. Is that good? That's better, thank you.
So the blue is the flood zone identified by FEMA maps, okay? The green is the wetlands that are identified by the U.S. National Wetland Service. So Chelsea, if you're, so see the green, that's where, that's national flood. Now, an individual can pay for a wetlands determination, and they actually go out there and determine it by soils, et cetera, et cetera. That line could change, but that is taken off of LIDAR, and that's what's currently considered the wetlands in the federal jurisdiction, okay? And then, Chelsea, if you're trying to agree, put the blue back on again. So the blue is the flood hazard area, okay? And this is an unnumbered A-zone, am I right?
Yes.
Okay. So an unnumbered A-zone, okay, our requirements, along with the federal requirements, are anything built in an unnumbered A-zone has to have an elevation certificate that is three feet above base flood elevation, okay? So in an unnumbered A-zone, there's not a base flood elevation that's determined, it will have to be determined, and then the lowest elevation of that floor has to be three feet above. So when you drive by certain areas that you've driven by in your life, and you seen like a mobile home on stilts, okay, that's when that has to be above the base flood elevation. That's what you see when you see things like that. So anything housing-wise or structure-wise, not a road, but structure-wise would have to do that in that area, okay? So if most of the houses go down in that field, they're not gonna have to meet the flood hazard area, okay? There're not gonna be requirements for that. So I just want to make sure everybody saw what that is.
Was that flood zone determined before or after they built the warehouses?
The flood zone's been there for years. It's based on the FEMA maps and the year that the FEMA maps were made.
But after they built the warehouses, I've got flooding in whole areas that I never did, and when you add this stuff to it, it's gonna, you're gonna make it so much water.
All right, we do need to get back, if you're gonna have a comment.
But that's the FEMA flood map that was done for the county.
Can we get a date on that, though, just out of curiosity?
Yeah, that's a good question. Chelsea would help.
Thank you.
That was my question, Ellen. 'Cause they vary all the time.
'Cause we haven't been notified who live on those properties that were there.
Okay, we're gonna get back to order, 'cause we're falling out of that. This is gonna be the last speaker, I think we've exceeded the additional five minutes, but yes, sir, if you would give us your name.
My name's Mike Crowder, I live on Goshen Road. Been there about 35 years, back when I used to be fortunate to see a car go by. Now I'm fortunate enough, I got, sometimes I sit in my driveway five to 10 minutes to get out of it. I know they're doing a road that they're supposedly gonna do, I don't know, I guess money problems or what, to sort of relieve some of the traffic off of Goshen, and I don't know when it's gonna be done, I've been hearing for years now.
Talking about the Parkway?
Yeah, the Parkway, you know? All I want y'all to do is, y'all need to come and ride through there, you know? I'll tell you, I'm one of the ones they're barking about, own big trucks, but my trucks only come to the house when I need to work on them, 'cause I've lived there long enough that, you know, I don't come there unless I'm driving my own. But the traffic has gotten horrendous on the road. I came home yesterday, which they were paving, I left yesterday, they were out in front of my road, my driveway, paving another road. I sat there for 20 minutes to come off my own driveway. People don't let you out like they used to. Back when I moved out here, you waved at everybody, you were fortunate enough to see somebody come by, but now, people don't know how to respect, let people out, they're all in a hurry, they don't want to wait on you, they want to speed wherever they're going, they're scared that if they let one car out, which that has nothing to do with y'all, but I'm just saying, we need to get some roads somewhere, 'cause it's that way everywhere in the county. 'Cause sometimes I go all the way out, go up off of Old River Road to come around, and it's the same way going that way. I used to be a police officer, I would leave my house and go to Old River Road to go into Chatham County sometimes, because it would take that long to get out of here. And I, you know, I know growth is coming, but we need to think about the roads before we do too much growth, because before long, we can't even get out of here. You know, my sister lived on Middle Ground Road, she could leave her house, and my ex-wife and my sister worked both of them at Cantler Hospital. My sister could leave Middle Ground and get there, and my wife could leave Goshen Road and get to Cantler before she could. Now it's completely different. It takes anyway, sometimes an hour to get to 95 from here, and most of the time, that's every day.
And so I do understand your concern about roads and traffic, you know, it will take time. I will say, everybody, please have patience, 'cause the county is doing a lot in this next year, there's gonna be a lot of work that everybody sees.
We've been hearing that for years, but...
I can say that there's contracts awarded, so there will be improvements happening.
I don't know where all the water's going. I had 15 to 20 loads of dirt brought in, now I've had rock brought in, and it's watching my rock away, you know, which, you know, don't get me wrong, it had to go somewhere, and we gotta have infrastructure for that, too, you know? 'Cause like I said, I am on Goshen Road, matter of fact, the back of my property is where they're all going. So, and it shows it's wetlands, and I've never had wet until the big flood, I think, what, 20-something years ago, when it flooded, and you couldn't get out, how long? 96 was the last time I had water in that area. Now I get water in that area. You know, 'cause my kids ride, my grandkids ride the four-wheeler back there, but they've never had any problems until recently. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. All right, at this time, I am going to close the public hearing, but I will ask, for those in the audience, if you're just giving, raise your hand if you're against the project, I just wanted for us to be able to see that. Okay, thank you. All right, with that, I am going to close the public hearing. We do now, as a board, have an opportunity to discuss, I'm sure there's questions, but I would, we can certainly discuss now, if there's questions, we won't, or we're gonna give five minutes to the applicant from a standpoint of his rebuttal and response. Is there any questions ahead of time?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to respond about traffic and stormwater. There are a few, I was trying to be respectful of their time to speak, so I didn't want to interject, but as far as the stormwater goes, the applicant, they're gonna have to go through, if this gets approved, they're gonna have to go through our local rules and regulations and the Effingham local design manual. Oh, yeah, I know, right? But anyway, they're gonna have to make sure that, you know, any flow that's coming off of their site, it's gonna have to match what's there existing today, and they're gonna have to do an analysis on, downstream analysis, to make sure they're not flooding anybody off their property. And that's gonna be, you know, they'll have to go through that process, and the county will be reviewing that. And then as far as I heard, you know, I'm worried about a berm, you know, preventing, you know, water from flowing, they'll have to account for that, they'll have to be a ditch or a pipe to allow water to leave or enter the site as it's doing today. And then as far as traffic is concerned, you know, the county, we did do a traffic study for Goshen Road, and, you know, we're trying to maintain the level, you know, improve the level of service that's there compared to today, and they would have to do a traffic impact analysis to show that, hey, we're not lowering down the level of service at key intersections, and so they're gonna have to go through all those steps before they get a single house built. So I just wanted to clarify a few things on that, I'm happy to take any questions, I guess, as far as that process goes, if it were to move forward.
Yeah, thank you, Jonathan. Sure.
Can I ask, so I was gonna give up, but what price range, are we not supporting these all the way?
So, one, I have closed the public hearings, I can't really entertain that, but I can tell you, we're not, we're not setting price limits or ranges as part of this board, it's not legal for us to do that. It's, the Department of Justice will look down on us if we dig into that, so we don't get into that from that standpoint.
She didn't say, we're already overgrounded, we're already...
Yes, ma'am, we've heard that the public hearing is over, I'm sorry, I'm not trying to be rude, but the... Okay. Okay, any other questions from the board of... All right, well, this time, we'll allow the applicant to come back forward to address any items that we may have heard, I think I've got one or two I might want to ask as well, so...
Mr. Chair, if I could just say one thing before you start that? The flood map, the date on that flood map was December 21st of 2017.
Okay, thank you.
We've all lived there longer than that.
So first of all, for the berming, I just want to clarify, so, and I'm not quite tall enough to reach here, what I want to see, but any berming that we would propose would be on the south side, right here? No berming on the north, I mean, that's all between us and the properties that front along, you know, the main road, that's all wetlands, so we have no intention of being in the wetland or putting a berm on the back of those properties to block anything.
And the berm is to make up for the lack of existing...
Vegetation, that's right, that's right. And as the engineer stated, we're very familiar with the county's regulations for stormwater management and downstream analysis, and we're fully committed to, you know, anything that needs to be done from an engineering perspective to make sure that this project meets, you know, the county's requirements. By no means would we want to propose anything that would cause any downstream impact or any harm to anybody upstream or on the adjacent properties. For traffic and just to, just to kind of, what Jonathan mentioned about the improvements, the county did enlist pond engineering to do a traffic study that basically outlines what would be the outcome of all these improvements. And with the, you know, with the growth rates that they've gotten this study through 2048, when all the improvements are installed... twenty forty-eight, when all the improvements are installed, um, the worst level of service is a C. Um, and, and that's twenty years from twenty, you know, that's in twenty forty-eight. So mostly every intersection will operate at a B through the life of the, of the design period. So we are hopeful that these improvements do alleviate a lot of the problems that these folks see and are brought up every day. As far as, uh, again, anything that, that, that's done on this site, um, from an engineering pers- perspective for stormwater management, um, the state and Effingham County have, have, you know, rigorous guidelines that we have to follow. Um, as an engineer in the state of Georgia, you know, I have to meet these things, and I'm ethically bound to, 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 to not cause any other harm to the, you know, the properties in the area. Um, so, so that is something that we would get through as we get through the planning process. Um, a note on the flood zone, so, so the, you are right, the flood map is old, FEMA, um, does update these maps every now and again. Um, we actually do expect an update at some point here soon. Um, so, so if it's done before the project comes to, to, you know, engineering plans, we, we would have to account for any change in the flood maps that occur. So yes, this map is old, um, if the maps do change between now and, you know, the time that the project is permitted, we would have to abide by the change in the maps.
Neil.
Yes, sir.
I could just stay close to the mic, cause there's people in.
Sure, yes, okay, okay. And then lastly, um, for the emergency access point that's just west of the eastern, you know, railroad, um, there is a driveway there currently, and, um, the intention is just for that access point to serve fire trucks, you know, and ambulances as needed. And then in the case of an emergency, if there was a mass flooding event or some catastrophic event, that would serve as, you know, a place that folks could egress from the property. Um, so as far as geometry and turning movements and that type thing, it wouldn't be a full access, um, it would just be for those times of need where, where, where people would need to come in and out, um, and, you know, in the case of a catastr- catastrophic event. And to the point that was made earlier, the main access point would be engineered and it would be, you would have the, the, the road built to the Effingham County standards, um, so we would expect that to, you know, operate not flood, um, as, as, as what was thought it may happen. So, with that, glad to answer any other questions.
Other questions from other board members? I do have a couple I would like to ask, but, any, any of them?
Uh, not question, well, I got some comments, but.
Okay. Uh, all right, so I do have a couple, if you don't mind. Um, so, the, the access, I appreciate you walking through that, and I know this site's challenged with two railroads on, uh, railroads on each, each side of it. So the secondary access is going to be just for emergency purposes, is it gonna be open to residents to use in a non-emergency event?
So it, it, it would have to be on some, so, so no. As a, as a, as a course of, of, of just day-to-day operations, there would be a Knox box-controlled gate there where the emergency responders would have access to unlock the gate. Um, the residents would not be allowed to come in and out of that access point on a, from a day-to-day basis. They would be limited to the main access.
Gotcha, yeah, um, yeah, I, I, I think the, um, the thing, I'll be honest, the thing I still struggle with is both the access points have to cross the issue that might be created, right? If there was a flooding issue, both access points might have to cross that flooding issue. Um, I have confidence that you can work, work that through, but that is something, when we saw the plan, I was trying to look and see where, where it was, and I see where it is now. Um, but I, I do expect some additional discussion to come related to that, because that's, that's a, uh, a critical thing that we saw input, uh, impact folks recently. I don't have to go back to, but August to have a, a storm of a very, very significant size that impacted folks. But, um, the other, the other piece is, I, I would love to see some specificity on the buffers, not just a berm, and I'm not saying we're recommending approval or not, but assuming it was, um, i- ideally, and, and I am a landscape architect, so I feel like I know a little bit about this. Preservation is the best, but if there's nothing to preserve there, I think a berm probably will help protect it. Um, but the berm needs to have some substance to it beyond just a berm, um, cause to the point that was ra- uh, raised earlier, there's a finite limitation on how high you can get in fifty feet, and it's not very high.
Sure, right.
Um, so just, I think, um, that is likely some clarification, I would anticipate that the, the next step in this process would want to see. And the final thing I'll say, and I know I've been rambling a bit, I have no clue what they are, five new standards will be, but I see a lot of the open spaces behind lots, a lot of the lakes are behind the lots, that are not really open for use, for the, uh, for the entire neighborhood, and, uh, I think that that might be something to, to, you know, to just consider as you go forward, because that's, that's, um, something that's cost of making sure the open space we're providing is not just checking the checkbox that is actually usable, uh, open space to, to the residents.
Yes, so just to respond to those things, um, we would be willing to, 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 to meet increased design standards for the access road. So if there's an event or, 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 or some other flooding stage or, or some, you know, stormwater, you know, requirement that we need to meet, you know, in increased level of, you know, of engineering standard, we would be willing to do that. So if there's a five-hundred-year floodplain, um, you know, elevation that we would need to build the road to, we would be willing to do that, to kind of help.
Which one?
The, um, main access road. So as far as the specificity for the buffer, I'm not a landscape architect, but I'm sure there's plants, s- s- species that we could pick to help screen, you know, put on the buffer to help screening, you know, ille agnus, I'm not sure, um, but I'm sure that w- we can come up with a plan to, to, to increase the, the robustness of the buffer.
Yeah, I would have that in, in the future.
Sure. Um, and then as far as the access to the open spaces, we can absolutely leave lots out of this thing to have access to the, to the, the ponds, and, and that's, that's not an issue, we can work that in the site plan. Um, so comment is noted, um, we, we will make adjustments.
So Neil, are you gonna have more than just passive recreation? Are you gonna have any active recreation, or is that something that you would con-
Yes, so right now, the, the amenity packages are not planned at all. Um, I would expect there to be active and passive in the neighborhood of, you know, of this magnitude, um, but as far as specifics, we don't have much information yet.
I would say be prepared for that, too.
Yeah, yeah.
No crystal, no, I don't have a crystal ball, but I think that's something that's very, getting to become more and more important, uh, understanding what the program of those spaces are gonna be.
Hey, Ryan, I'll just add, yes, there's definitely, the orange area on there is planned as a, an active amenity, you know, pool, clubhouse, that kind of thing, it's not designed yet, but it's certainly set up that way, envisioned that way. Um, the things that are included in those amenities vary by, you know, builder, target, market, all those things, that'll be figured out, but yes, there will be an active amenity. Um, also fully intend that the other open spaces that are designated will have, you know, walking trail connectivity, pocket parks, dog parks, that kind of thing. Um, so yes, that, there will be both, and, um, we can certainly create a landscape plan. Um, it was never my intention for the berm to be just a berm, I, I meant that to be with landscaping. Um, Neil and I discussed this earlier, there is no s- set landscape ordinance or guideline, really, for a berm in this instance, so we have not drawn that, but if, if that's something that you, you're saying that we need to do is just create something to show, we can do that, I would say, in, in either case, if staff has during the, the site plan review process or construction plan process, if they want to weigh in on what that buffer should look like, we'll certainly, you know, participate and do whatever they, they think is best within reason.
Right, thank you for the clarification. Any other questions, Neil, anything else?
I have a quick question. What, how, and you might have said this, and I just need to hear it again, um, what is the buffer between, um, you said earlier that, um, it will not impact any of the flood zones when you were talking earlier, Neil?
Yes, ma'am.
So what is your buffer between where the development is gonna be versus where the flood zone, flood zones are? And then also, um, as, in a few years, the flood zones FEMA controls that, they might change, so obviously, that's a pretty big blanket statement to make. So you're just saying, as of right now, they're not gonna impact him, so what's the buffer gonna be?
Yes, so, um, right now, the flood zone line is contained within the, the confines of the wetlands. So we have had a wetland, uh, consultant on the site, so the wetland lines that you see, these are, they did go out and flag, you know, flag these wetlands. Um, right now, the flood zone line is within the limits of the wetlands, so we, we wouldn't impact the wetlands, so everything that we do would be up, upland of that, the wetland line, so we wouldn't impact any of the flood zones as they're drawn today.
Today.
Now, you said, when, when, aside from the access roads, so we do have to cross these wetlands, we do have to, there will be minor impacts there, which we'll have to mitigate for, um, but as far as like the homes and the main roads within this neighborhood, it would all be upland, you know, on the upland side of the wetlands and the flood zone. Now, with that said, if FEMA changed the flood zone lines between now and the time of permitting, we would have to abide by the new lines.
Okay.
So buffer-wise, um, just kind of coming back on that, would, in my opinion, would be just where it's, you know, directly impacting any other residences on the north side, it's not particularly, because the wetlands is the buffer, and it's natural vegetation and buffer, which, you know, is, is ideal. On the flip side of that, the south side, um, everybody's daintous property, I mean, that's, that's, uh, wide open, um, I wouldn't like it at all, um, you know, if it, if it was mine, unfortunately, I've got the same exact situation. I've got a piece of property in South Effingham, and I've got a phase-three of a neighborhood coming in right behind me, but, you know, it's part of it, I wish I would have bought it when I had a chance to, and, um, you know, I didn't, um, but I, you know, if this thing was to get approved, I would definitely want to see some sort of, uh, vegetated, you know, berm, not just a, you know, a natural twenty or fifty foot, whatever it may be, um, definitely something built up to protect them and, and, you know, and their rights and, uh, the farm they got. On the infrastructure, um, like Ryan said, contracts are out for Goshen widening and, and whatnot, so that is in the works coming up. Uh, schools, we've got some new data from January fourteenth, uh, this year of, uh, capacity, and we have room for expansion, um, in the schools, so the schools aren't a problem. Um, roundabouts, so traffic, the roundabouts, uh, which are also, quite a few of them in contract and coming forward, um, I think that's gonna drastically help traffic situations, and I think it's just your main time, you know, your early morning and afternoon, main deal with the traffic, anything, you know, in the middle of the day, during the day, you know, I'm in and out of the county all the time, and I don't see a whole lot of issues with traffic, you know, in your normal hours.
Thank you, uh, so, anything additional, otherwise we're gonna close this part down, and we'll, uh, open, open it up for the board to discuss.
That's it.
Okay.
Thank you, Ryan.
All right, thank you. Remind me, did I, I, I closed the public hearing previously, yeah, I just want to make sure I did that part. Okay, I'm gonna open it up to the board, if there's anything we want to discuss or act, between us, um, I, I would remind that, um, we do have the wherewithal to recommend additional conditions beyond what the staff report. Oh, every time I touch this thing, it zaps all over the place, sorry about that, just wanna try to find those. Chelsea, was there any specific conditions? Yeah, I see that, um, I think I'm on the right one now here. Uh, so preliminary plat approved by the Board of Commissioners, all site developments shall comply with Effingham County Code of Ordinances, chapter thirty environmental, chapter thirty-four, uh, thirty-four flood damage prevention, along with local stormwater design manual. Uh, buffers shall adhere to the Effingham County Code of Ordinances, and, uh, US Army Corps of Engineers must approve and permit all wetland impacts, I'm not reading those out exactly, and then the per the International Fire Code, a secondary emergency access shall be provided for the development. I just say that that's what staff's recommended from a condition standpoint, um, you know, um, no, no clue how this board may make a motion here in a moment, but just do keep in mind that we do have the, the, uh, the ability to add additional, uh, conditions, I, I will say in one, and I would ask for y'all to consider if, if it is a recommended for approval. Right now, the condition is only that it has to adhere to the county code for buffers, and they're offering more than that, so we need to be very clear that we expect more than currently. So, with that, any, uh, discussion, any questions between us?
I have, I have a question. Right now, the way it would be proposed is, the, is that there won't be any water intrusion on properties, that's, that's, but what happens in five, ten years down the road, water tables change, or something else is built that's moved water? Does that, is that a situation where, sorry, that it didn't affect you initially, but now it does, does someone still have to go back and correct that situation?
So, um, Jonathan Holm County Engineer, so in that kind of scenario, I mean, every proposed development has the same, like, they go through the same requirements that this development would have to go through, so they would have to, you know, make sure, I, I mean, hypothetically, I don't think that situation would happen, because, you know, we're, we're supposed to be checking for just that, to make sure that's not gonna happen.
Okay.
Um, and, and in that event, let's say they are doing that, then, um, you know, that it's really, it's not on this development that is causing the issue, it's really the other development, um, that's causing an increase in the downstream, uh, you know, water table, or, you know, anything of that nature, so, um, does that make sense?
So that new development or structure would be required to take care of that situation, that'd fall on them now?
Correct, yeah, cause there's a, they would have to do a downstream and upstream analysis of their development, so they would have to capture that. Um, one thing to note, um, just so you guys are aware, too, the county, we did just change our stormwater requirements to increase the requirements, um, for neighborhoods typically, or before twenty twenty-five, it was a ten-year storm event that they had to do, now they have to do a twenty-five-year storm event. So the county has increased our standards for stormwater above what state requires. Um, so, you know, the county is looking at, you know, we have increased our stormwater standards within the last month.
Okay, thank you, Jonathan.
Yep.
Anything else?
Um, I'm gonna add this, um, I know the incredible need of housing in the county, you know, I keep up with that data regularly, and very, I watch it like a hawk. So I know the incredible need for housing, but I also am, in that, in the traffic that everyone is talking about, um, I drive around the county daily, um, for work, but I also in the evenings have to drive from Savannah to Effingham County four days a week, um, so I'm biting that traffic also. And I really think if we do choose to approve this, it really does need to have some type of timeframe around the road construction that's going to happen. Um, there's, at least when I drive from Savannah to Effingham County, those, at least two of the days, it takes over an hour and fifteen or twenty minutes to get home, so.
So do you have a thought on what level, like, of the improvements that they mentioned, like what we would be comfortable with? I mean, we gotta provide some clarity of a standard from that standpoint, or at least a recommendation of it. Or we can keep it general, within the, we rely on the commissioners to make sure of that, but we, we need to give some clarity of like, what, what the reasoning for that was.
I wrote some notes down here to pass on to them, um, and so maybe let's let them review all of our, um, review all the notes from the agenda minutes, and then, um, that information, and let them kind of come up with a idea.
Can we ask for a phasing plan?
That's what I'm, that's what I was thinking, like, maybe a phase plan, cause if it's, if it goes to a production builder, they are going to phase them out rather quickly.
Steve, do you have thoughts on how we could structure some sort of a condition related to that?
Pick a number.
You could tie it to.
Do you all have a number you're comfortable with?
I was gonna say, the, the IFC that the, that it references has a hundred and twenty-unit cap before you have to, requires a second entrance, so that would be an easy one to do. So that would be an easy one to pick, but we're, we're open to other, other suggestions. That's, that's, that's the most obvious, I guess.
That would be a third limiting with.
But I, then I would also say that to do the first third, you need to go ahead and have the access in and have it up standard.
The secondary? Beyond the first third? Okay, as soon as you get to the whatever first one after the first, third?
As soon as you break ground, you need to have it there.
Okay.
See what I'm saying?
Okay.
Can I ask a question that has nothing to do with this? It's something for my own peace of mind because y'all keep referring to downstream on this property. Now, I'm just curious, are you talking about downstream going from 665 Goshen Road to 785, which would go, we're going this way or are we going that way? I, I'm asking because I live in a wetland and I'm a flood zone now. So I'm curious of what you're calling downstream because I can tell you which way the, the water drains and it's not the way y'all were talking about.
So you want me to reply?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
That's fine. But that's going to be, that's going to be the final question for the audience.
Yeah. So it'd just be based off of what's there existing today. So, you know, um, I haven't done a detailed, you know, I haven't been given a stormwater, um, report for what they've been, you know, or wanting to do there to propose, you know, to develop it, but they would have to, you know, establish, you know, essentially any water coming onto their site and then any water to leaving their site. So they'd have to do analysis, you know, regardless of, if it's going east or south or west or north, you know, they would have to analyze both anything coming in and anything going out of their site.
Well, I asked that question because our ditches are dug upwards. They go up. They're not down in the ground. They don't slant the way they're supposed to.
Okay. All right. If there's no other comment, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make one.
No, sir. Thank you. Appreciate it.
You know, this is a tough one. It aligns with the future fan, uh, future land use map, uh, the county comprehensive plan. Um, like Lindsay said, we have a, a lot of demand for housing and unfortunately we're in a, a very good area, um, economy-wise. Um, you know, if, if we do move forward with this, I would like to see, um, 120 cap, um, with access, um, already estat-, you know, being established and purchased. Um, and I guess that would be what date frame with the 120?
Well, the, it was 28 for the completion of Goshen Road, so 128 till the completion, 120 till the completion.
Is that clear enough?
Correct.
Okay.
That would be 120 CO'd.
CO'd, that's right.
And that's with both entrances.
That's correct.
From the very beginning of construction.
Correct.
Uh, definitely want to see, um, a vegetated berm, um, against the south side of the property, mainly the dantus, uh, land, just the, the farm back there. But with those conditions and staff recommendation, um, I'll make a motion to approve the zoning.
We have a motion. I want to ask for one thing clarifying, the final condition about the berm. Can I get you to add a minimum width that they offered up? They could do more, right? But they said 50 feet and I want to.
Well, 50 foot wide, but I mean, a dirt berm, I don't think we need to be a 50-foot wide berm.
But the buffer area, I wanted to make sure we're clear that they're giving more.
Uh, Winfield, I think is a pretty good example. They got a, you know, a nice vegetated dirt berm, seems like, and, and I think that works, you know, a lot better. Um.
And Mr. Chair, excuse me, Mr. Chair, also, um, Mr. McKenzie, um, made a point that it was possible, um, to meet the 500-year, um, floodplain, uh, requirements for the main access road. Um, and that, I don't want to put words in your mouth, Neil, but more or less, okay? I, I think that's another one you should include in there, please.
Can I add just, um, since we don't know the five.
Yeah, you don't know what the elevation is going to be.
Just say, um, increase the engineering standards?
Right. That's fine, but.
So because we're not engineers and Jonathan is, and there's another person that's concerned with that, I don't know how to clarify that right now.
Yeah. I would be a little concerned with Goshen Road and elevation there and how that relates to the 500 years.
It's going to be down below, it's not going to be up by Goshen.
I just, I, I, I don't, I don't know how, it's something that I think is a good idea, um, but I think it needs a little bit more time to refine.
If it's not in the conditions, it might be that.
Well, how about we put a condition and put this out there that they have to get with our county engineer? And, um, there's another party that's concerned with this access point and that's our emergency management agency related to that. That's what's driving all of it. Um, I don't want to set some arbitrary number that, again, I'm not an engineer, I hadn't studied it, so I hate to throw some number out there, but I think it's pretty clear that we want to make sure that above and beyond, uh, checking a minimum standard checkbox is considered for that because of the extenuating circumstance that the, both the access points still have to go through that. I think that's what makes it unique. So again, that was a terribly long thing and it's not my motion in the first place. So I guess I can't add that condition, but, um, Jake, I don't know if you're willing to say that you agree with something of that nature?
I was, one, one thing to add, I, I did look through the, um, level of service criteria for, uh, flooding for neighborhood roads and it's for a 25-year storm event that one lane will have to be open. So it's even, I, in my opinion, I mean, it's a little more stricter than a 500-year raising it. So, cause it's.
25 years?
25 year, they've got to have one lane open. So.
Y'all have that?
I mean, they, they, they would have to, that's in our ordinance, they'd have to do that regardless. So that's what is currently in our local stormwater manual.
Right.
That's, that's okay.
Okay. This is where the planning board is going to defer to the experts because, I mean, we do know that, that the county's been working on that and proving that. So, um, again, I don't know if we need a, an additional condition on that. Hopefully the commissioners will get the discussion to.
The new local storm.
Yeah.
I, I don't think that.
All right. So we have a motion on the, uh, on the floor, um, with, with the conditions. The condition's clear enough for staff?
50-foot wide buffer, dirt and vegetated berm, 120 house cap until the Goshen widening is complete, 2028, um, in the wetland, um, I'm sorry, flood, flood zone.
And, and all houses can go after phase one?
Oh.
All houses in what?
Correct.
Okay.
I mean, all infrastructure should be complete by then, so I don't see any reason for any holdup.
You just, you just didn't say it. I just want to make sure you met.
Right. The only limitation was the first cap. Yes.
And also that the, uh, emergency access, you know, is already got to be in the process, land acquired and purchased, um, and in the works.
Okay.
Upon completion of the first phase.
We have a motion. Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye. Raise your hand, please do. Uh, aye as well. Any nays? We have one nay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The, uh, the motion does pass with a positive recommendation to the board of commissioners. Same as the last two, uh, agenda items though, uh, we are just a recommend, recommending board. The final decision lies with the board of commissioners. Uh, that meeting again is March the 4th. Is that right? I got that date right now, so don't want y'all to skip the wrong meeting, but I encourage you to be there. Um, they'll want to hear from you as well, just like we did March 4th. Yes, same, same spot, uh, same spot on March the 4th.
Are you?
All right. Yes, ma'am. Same room, same room.
Is there business or?
Okay. I, I want to, I want to close. Uh, is there any other business of the board?